First, order of business is I'd like to acknowledge our recording secretary and IT coordinator, Mr. Bo Kankowitz and Anita Pratt for taking our minutes and handling our technology needs. Next, we have approval of a couple of minutes. If I could get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop, August 19th, 2025.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, the motion for the minutes for the school committee retreat of August 19th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the school committee retreat, August 19th, 2025.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're gonna go to the highlight on schools and introduce our new staff.
Hello. This is Nicole's dream come true. So Nicole is a parent of children, in son and daughter, in the Waschusseth School District, where she has been working in the special education at Mountview Middle School. She originally is from California, went to Berkeley. After raising the kids, they moved out this way. Her kids are super into sports and love school. And she has been a Spanish teacher, took some time off, and now is back. And we were very, very, very lucky to secure her to be a Spanish teacher for us here at West Boylston Middle High School. I've had an opportunity to go in and watch her teach, she's doing awesome. Dynamic, engaging, making learning languages fun. And it's just a pleasure to have you. So I'll let the committee say hello, and you can sing or do whatever you want. Do you guys have any questions for Nicole?
Just welcome to the district, Nicole. Anybody have anything they would like to add? No? Excellent, welcome.
Next month, Nicole and her colleague Paula are going to be asking you to approve a possible school trip for 2027 to Argentina. So someplace that I think they'd learn to speak Spanish, and sounds like an amazing place. So, thank you, Nicole. Alright. Next, I'd like to introduce John, aka Jack Latoskis. Come on up, Jack. Jack is our new grade eight and grade six ELA teacher. A recent graduate of Bridgewater State College, graduated with honors, played high school soccer, and he's actually our middle school boy soccer coach. So if you're hearing good things when the kids come home about how much fun soccer is, it's one of the reasons why. He's doing an amazing job. Having had a chance to go in and watch him teach, his classroom is exciting. It's a beautiful learning space. The kids feel welcome, and I'm just very impressed with what he's brought to our school culture and climate. And he comes in every day with energy and excitement, and we're just very fortunate to have you.
Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. I'm unfamiliar with the structure of this. Should I, is there anything I should go across?
Sorry.
I think welcome and a huge thank you.
Song and dance is customary.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't listen to Jim.
Thank you.
I promise I'll never-
Oh, can I say one thing?
I will never hand a microphone to a DJ again. Poor game. Yes.
Sorry. I'm leaning in. Hi, I'm Nancy. I just wanna say thank you for coaching the middle school soccer team. That really means a lot to the community. And you've probably met the girls' middle school soccer coach, who happens to be my wife. And so she loves you. You remind us of our nephew. But anyway, no, really, thank you so much, because it was a little touch and go there for a minute. So, we're really excited. Thank you.
Yeah, and they're yet to see him practice with them, you know, full speed. He's played at a very, very high level, so he's humble, but the kids are gonna continue to improve and enjoy it, and they're having a great time. So, thank you again, Jack.
Welcome, Jack.
So those are the new teachers that we have. I also have a student that I'd like to recognize. Is that appropriate? It's at the end of my report. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I was made aware of an act of community service and bravery that took place over the summer. A student that I have enjoyed getting to know since middle school. Lucas Sterling did something very courageous over the summer. Just a little background, Lucas came here for elementary school, middle school. He's always been a very conscientious, great kid. Did a year at the vocational school. I think, you know, enjoyed it, but felt like I wanted to be back in WB. Very glad that he came back, had an excellent sophomore year. Over the summer, got his license, he's working. I was honored to write a letter of recommendation for him at his place of employment. He was heading home one night from work, and he was behind a driver who seemed to be struggling to stay on the road. And he kept his distance, but kept his eye on the situation, sort of ready to call 911 in case this person, you know, went off the road, which happened, which nearly happened several times. This individual ended up getting involved in a very serious head-on collision. Lucas ran to this person's aid, helped keep them calm, detangled them from their airbag, and remained with them while calling 911. The first responders came, and he essentially made sure that this individual was safe and was okay. Just an act of bravery and maturity, and something you seldom see from a 16 or 17-year-old to have the presence of mind to do that. Lucas would've lived the rest of his life without telling that story, but I get a call from the police and fire in town just saying what an amazing kid we have here. So superintendent asked that I take a moment to recognize Lucas. So we invited his parents and Lucas to come. I'd like to ask you to come up for a moment. You're a lot taller than you were in sixth grade. The parents, the committee, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions, not to put you on the spot, but you deserve it. You make us all proud, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Lucas, that was a very amazing story. I'm kind of without words. Very proud to be in a district that has students, you know, of your nature that are concerned with other human beings, and would put aside your own safety for the safety of somebody else. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And I'll have a certificate to present to him when we have a class meeting. I'd like to do it in front of his classmates. I'd like to thank mom and dad for raising such a fine young man, and keep doing your homework and being a good kid. Thank you.
I'm just gonna wait for Dan to return before continuing. Alex, do you know the teacher that couldn't make it? Is she in the middle school or middle high? Both, she said both? Could we, even though she's not here, maybe give a brief introduction? Introduce the teacher that couldn't make it as well?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce, she's not here, Haley Thurber. She is our part-time BCBA that has joined the district this year. She is working district-wide between both buildings. She comes to us as a graduate of Worcester State University in Arizona State University with her degree, her master's in special education applied behavior analysis. She has, for the past two years, been working at home-based ABA companies, McGrail and Associates, as well as Cabbie and Worcester. She has a little one, I think that's two and a half, if I recall correctly, a little girl, and she loves playing soccer, and she's excited to be part of West Boylston team. And so far, she's been wonderful addition.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, now that'll bring us to the community input section.
Hi, I stand before you tonight as-
Tracy, we need, just so everybody knows, you need to state your name, please, for the minutes.
Tracy Karen, Stillwater Heights Drive. I stand before you tonight as a very concerned parent of a first grader. When my oldest daughter began kindergarten last year, I was alarmed to learn that she had 24 children in her classroom. However, I chose not to speak up at the time, because I'd heard nothing but wonderful things about Major Edwards, aside from the condition of the building. It was the first day of this school year that I learned that my daughter's first-grade class now has 28 students. As both a parent and an educator, I am outraged. First grade is instrumental in a child's educational journey. By the end of first grade, children are expected to be able to read independently. If they do not reach that milestone, the consequences can be long-lasting and will hinder future learning outcomes. I can personally attest that literacy instruction must be provided early, often, and intensively. A classroom of 28 six- and seven-year-olds makes this nearly impossible. It severely limits learning opportunities, as even the most seasoned and skilled teacher will spend the majority of their time on behavior management. Small class sizes have been proven to have the largest impact on positive student outcomes for decades. The research is clear, and it's not new. Smaller class sizes lead to improved student outcomes, particularly if implemented in the primary grades. For this reason, most districts in Massachusetts recommend class sizes of 18 to 22 students for primary grades, with less than 20 being optimal. Any class exceeding 24 students should be seriously considered for splitting. West Boylston's own policy recommends class sizes of 18 to 23 students for grades K to 3, and 19 to 25 for grades 4 to 5. Clearly, this policy has been ignored for years now, as we have three grade levels that are beyond the upper limits of this recommendation. This is not just about one bubble grade anymore. And yet, this past spring, the school committee approved a budget that eliminated nine teaching positions without any public discussion of the potential impact on class sizes. This issue is not new, and it has been neglected for far too long. I understand that we need a new school, but that's a long-term solution. We need a short-term plan to ensure our children are not losing more time, more instruction, and more opportunity. I hope tonight's discussion on student enrollment will result in practical, achievable solutions that can be implemented within the current year. Thank you.
Hello. Vanessa Kuzminovsky, 6 Nuha Circle. I'm here as a parent of two elementary school kids. First, I just wanna say thank you to all of our teachers and to the new administration. I know stepping into these roles right now isn't easy, and I want you to know that the parents are here to help. My first grade teacher, my first grader is in a class of 28 students as well, a different class. And my third grader is in a class of 27. These numbers make it hard for even the best teachers to give every child the support they need. This isn't just a classroom issue, it's a community issue. Parents are here to support the efforts to move West Boylston forward, and that includes working together toward a new school. We are committed to standing behind our educators and administrators so that our children can thrive in an environment that truly fosters learning.
Hi, my name is Stephanie McGreevy. I live at 168 Temple Street. And I didn't have a full speech prepared, but I'm also concerned about the class size. My daughter is in the first grade. Last year, her class was too large as well. This year, she has 28 students in her class. And the concern is obviously reduced individualized attention. It's much higher than any person that I've spoken to, their children in the first grade. Their class size is more like 18 or 20. And then, classroom management challenges. I know that that seems to be an issue for some friends of mine who are also teachers if their kids are in a larger class. Learning gaps and equity concerns, not just for my child, but also other children that might require more special attention and need. And then the teachers, who are gonna burn out from really having to manage such a large classroom. And these are the most important crucial years for our children to build a good, strong foundation for learning. So, you know, just here today to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lesa Ashwell, 139 Woodland Street. And I'm here to echo the same things as all the other parents, really, which is to ask the board to explore more options to prioritize the reduction of elementary school classes specifically. I'm really excited to see the plans in the works for the new school, as it's desperately needed. But my understanding is that it will be several years in the making if approved. This leaves the children currently in school, including mine, at a disadvantaged position. My daughter is in fourth grade in a class of 26 students, and my son in a class in first grade of 28 students. One of the core values listed on our school district website is to challenge academic and personal excellence. With our current class sizes, I don't think we're allowing the teachers or the kids, the environment, that they can truly achieve that. My daughter has been attending Major Edwards since first grade, with classes each year well above the ideal student ratio that seems to be studied to say is 13 to 1. And often, we're at double that. And that seems to be growing larger every year since she's been here. So although she has not experienced any personal academic struggles, this also leaves her at a disadvantage, as she's somewhat unprioritized or unchallenged due to the teachers' need to focus on those needing more help. And to be clear, I don't fault the teachers or the school for those things. I just think that we need to come up with some new solutions to try to fix that, or at least ease those burdens. Some things that I would suggest would be, potentially, we do things like get trailers and have more classrooms. Add a teacher to every grade so that we can reduce those class sizes. Or also, something that might be worth considering is going to a year-round school structure. My daughter did kindergarten in a year-round school, and I know that would really upend what we do here, so I don't know how that works. But I was really afraid of that structure and ended up loving it. You know, the kids get several vacations throughout the years, they get less loss of learning as a summertime thing, and you're allowed to have a smaller class or a smaller building with less student teacher ratio. So you end up with, you know, you hire a few more students and staff through the summer, but now you have students who are going in different schedules. The one I was in was four different schedules. And all of the children had 12 to 1 ratios or less. So we really thrive there, and I would suggest maybe that's an option too, at least as an interim thing until we can figure out how we can get more buildings or teachers or things. But anyway, that's all. I just hope that we can consider something to make sure that both those with more needs and those that have less aren't forgotten.
Hi, I'm Short. Hi, Kelly Doust, 122 Lee Street. I'm just here, first of all, I wanna say thank you to everybody at Major Edwards. Both my children, one's in fourth grade, one is currently in first grade. Absolutely love school. They get up, they're excited, they tell me about their day. And they get a quality education because of the teachers and staff there. They are supportive. Anytime I reach out, they reach right back to me, and I can't say enough. And I've been teaching in a classroom for 18 years, so I, as a teacher, know the challenges of districts and funding and staff and class sizes. I know that firsthand. And these teachers and staff are dealing with all of this and yet making wonderful strides with our children. That's to be noted. But the reality remains that our class sizes are astronomical, and that's unacceptable for everyone involved, both teachers, paraprofessionals, support staff, and the students. In addition to that, the laying off of these teachers without public input of some sort is really concerning. These are our students, this is our future, this is our investment. And then lastly, I do know that we are looking into a new building, but that is a long-term solution. We need our infrastructure, our buildings, to be fixed, and not Band-Aid jobs. We need to focus our attention on funding the necessary fixes. Not Band-Aids, not, well, we need a quick fix. We need to really make these buildings to last, because we may not get that new building. We have just started the process. So I really wanna speak to the committee here. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for letting me be here. But again, kudos to the Major Edwards teachers and the admin. Thank you.
Any others?
David Ashwell, 139 Woodland Street. Echoing the prior concerns of the parents that have come up, I really don't wanna set our teachers up to triage instead of teach. And I feel like these current ratios is what we are essentially asking them to do. And that's not good for them as professionals and their careers. It's not good for our children going to the school system. West Boylston enjoys a reputation of a pretty solid education, and that directly ties as well into the value of our town to the perceived desirability of it. So I would not be afraid at larger-town meetings for anyone on this board that wants to convey and remind the town that the quality of life in this town is intricately tied to these institutions, and that driving that into the future, we need to continue to fund those things at the appropriate levels that we don't slip. Again, I hope that everyone on this committee feels empowered at their public events to speak that to all those that need to hear that information. And hopefully, we can get the funds figured out in the future for better student teacher ratios and for schools going forward. Thank you.
Hi, hello. Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Connors from 393 Lancaster Street. And I echo a lot of what's already been said. But I do wanna urge the committee to prioritize shorter-term solutions to reduce class sizes. Because while I'm excited about some of the long-term solutions that are being talked about, if we wait too long, our children are learning and growing in the environment right now, and every year, it continues to compound. And so I think while I appreciate the long-term solutions, I'd really love the committee to consider shorter-term solutions as our children continue to grow in these large class sizes every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Josiah Sansone, 2 Nuha Circle. I just wanna say, obviously, I echo everything everyone has already said here tonight, talking about class size ratios and so forth, so I'm not gonna go back over that. I will say that I have two children in the elementary school, one in fifth grade and one in second. My son actually went to a private school in Holden for his K through 2, and they had class size ratios between 10 and 16. Now, I know that's not gonna be possible here, it's very difficult. But I will say that that, I saw the effect of having those type of ratios on his learning, you know, and his experience there was extremely positive, so. But I will just say that, you know, people have talked about, you know, we need to have solutions. You know, I applaud the administrators and the teachers and say that we, as parents, really appreciate everything you do with less, right? I know that everyone's having to make do with less. And having gone through the budgetary struggles of the last couple of years and attended the town meetings, I understand the need to unfortunately try to be less proactive with growing the budget with the school, given the overall attitude in the town over our town budget, and that that was unfortunate. But what I will say is that I lay part of that blame at the feet of the previous superintendent, who was publicly unwilling to speak up about the ramifications of the budget. And I actually asked him directly at one of the meetings what the ramifications of the budget cuts would be on staffing at the schools. And he came up and said, "I don't wanna be alarmist," you know, and that he wouldn't comment on it. So what I would ask of the staff, of the school committee, of the superintendent is, you have a lot of parents who are willing to get behind you and support pushes for more budget, because we can talk about solutions all we want, but the solution is more money. Let's be honest, right? In order to have more teachers, smaller class sizes, more resources, whatever, classrooms, it's more money. And so we need the town to get behind that, those budgetary increases, to support that. And you have a lot of parents who I think will go to bat, will come to town meetings, will support that on social media, but we need the administrators and the school committee to also get out there and honestly to push that agenda and be frank with the impact that it's having on our students and on our schools, and provide a plan for, hey, we need this much, right? And this is what it's gonna go towards. This is the impacts that it's currently having on students. And if we don't increase it, this is what's gonna happen down the road. And because if we're not honest about those impacts, what we've seen is that the people in town, you know, if you say, "Oh, well, fine, we'll get by," they'll go, "Alright, sounds like you're good. We're not gonna give you any more money if you say you don't need it." Right? A lot of people in town, they won't do that. They're not gonna go, "Yeah, here, let's increase your budget when you tell us you don't need it." So we gotta tell them, we need this money in order to provide for the future of the children who are in school now, and the future of the children who are going to be entering these schools within the next five to 10 years. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Neil, do you have something? I think if everybody's okay, Neil will be the last one. Alright, bring it home, Neil.
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. Just echoing the last round of comments, I'm hoping that this committee views the people in this room here as allies and resources that can be relied upon to advocate for schools. Assuming all of you have an interest in improving the school system, that's why, for those of you who are elected, that you ran for this committee. And so obviously, you've got a number of people here in the room that only represent a fragment of the overall interest level in standing behind you as you undertake what is unquestionably a very difficult task. Please don't hesitate to look to the people in the room and the others in the community that want to offer full-throated endorsement to initiatives that are gonna address the deficiencies that everybody has done a really good job identifying, that I'm sure none of you are ignorant of. So just leave you with that message. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for coming. I really do appreciate the community input section. It's very rare that we actually have people that come up and provide some constructive feedback instead of blasting things out on Facebook that just create havoc. So thank you very much. For those of you who don't understand or don't know how public community input works, we're not really allowed to address anything, even though we technically have a school class-size agenda item. The input was a little broader than that. So we'll talk about the class size at that point in the agenda, so you're more than well- point in the agenda, so you're more than welcome to stay. But I did hear some other concerns. We do have a budget and capital planning subcommittee meeting that's going to occur prior to our next regular school committee meeting. So Dan, what I'd like to ask is that we work together to try to capture the input or the concerns and bring it up at the capital and budget subcommittee meeting, and then try to either, through the report from that subcommittee, or another agenda item, maybe address some of the concerns, and so we can, because we're not really allowed to respond, so we can put something on the agenda so we can respond to a lot of what you're saying. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add along those lines? Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we're going to move on. We have a couple warrants to approve. If I could get a motion for the payables warrant?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the payables warrant dated September 2nd, 2025.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion for the payroll warrant?
I make a motion for the payroll warrant dated August 29th, 2025.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. School building subcommittee report. You want me to do it? You want me to do it? All right. I think we've met three times since the formulation of it. The high note is, is we've discussed a lot of different things as far as organization of the subcommittee, voting members of the subcommittee. We're working on making sure that our deliverables are being met in Module One of the new school building project. We are preparing three information sessions, as we do need to go to town meeting in October to secure funds for feasibility study. What else? Those three info sessions are going to address regionalization, capital needs, and the process. So we're trying, these are, as with some of the other Prop Two and a Half override work that's been done, these are information sessions that we're trying to put together to answer some questions of the community, so that hopefully in October, it passes town meeting and also a ballot election. Any, go ahead.
I just want to thank the committee and Dr. Riley specifically for doing the due diligence and digging in to gathering the information necessary for the town to make informed decisions. I feel like we are in an excellent place to get the information out to all of you that the community is going to need in order to make an informed decision at town meeting and beyond, and I am confident in the group of people that are organized, that the best interests of the town and our students now and in the long term are at the heart of the work, and so I just want to emphasize that, and we'll continue. And the transparency, like, there's really a goal to get this information that we're talking about out to all of you, and so I pledge, and I think the rest of the committee is committed, to making sure that that happens, and please hold us accountable to that.
I want to add one additional thing. We decided to do a significant amount of work, I think, on getting educated on what regionalization would look like, because that's a question that has come up over the years, and we didn't really have a true answer on the process and how it even works and what is entailed in it. And I think we've done quite a bit of work, as Dr. Riley, myself, and Emily, along with the subcommittee, to really get a lot of information, to develop a really constructive presentation. So I really encourage people to come to that, so that they can be well-informed about what that would look like for the school district and what the process is. Dr. Riley, have anything you would like to add?
I echo what you both have shared. I think it's a really well-rounded group of representatives for the town, folks that have the best interests of the kids at heart, and want to move the town forward into its next step in the future. It's a really important project, and it's been a lot of really important work to make sure that when the community brings to us their thoughtful questions, that we have thoughtful answers, and I feel like we've put the work in to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just add one more thing, I think, I'm sorry, but it's important. It's a big deal. Again, to thank all of you that came forward tonight, because the information that you're bringing to us and that we are critically aware of is a crucial piece to our decision-making process, and to Jim's point, it means a lot, and it's incredibly important for you all to take the time to come here and speak and get this on the record, because it's a town-wide issue. It goes well beyond the school community proper, and it impacts our town now and in decades to come, and so thank you for coming, and these data points that you raised tonight will be part of the decision-making process and the information coming forward.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, okay, good. We'll move on to Major Edwards' reports.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Major Edwards is off to a pretty smooth and positive start. We welcome back our students in first through fifth grade on Wednesday, August 28th, and last week, our new kindergarten students on Wednesday, September 3rd, and our preschool students on Thursday, September 4th. In addition to our new kindergarten students, we welcome several new families and students to the Major Edwards community, and I just want to say, one of the greatest things about the start of the year is just seeing all the older students helping out, showing the kids where to go, what to be expected. It's just nice to see all the students working together to help each other. During our first week, we held our kindergarten screening for our incoming students that we held for both our preschool and kindergarten, open houses as well. This is always a nice way to ease our new students into the school as they transition into kindergarten and preschool. Also gave them a chance to get familiar with their surroundings, meet their teachers, and of course, we always get that nice enjoyable ride through Wes Boylston for our kindergarten students. I want to say, this is the first year in my career, I did not have any students upset coming into the building for kindergarten and for the bus ride, so that was a big win there. During the first few weeks of school, teachers and students went over the rules and expectations and routines throughout the classrooms and other important areas, such as the cafeteria, hallways, and the playground, in addition to the arrival and dismissal process, which can sometimes be a little bit complicated, especially for the new ones. Teachers also spent time reviewing and practicing classroom procedures to ensure a safe and positive environment so that they're ready to learn. During our first few days of professional development of the start of the year, our teachers spent time completing district-mandated trainings, setting up their classrooms, and reviewing student information. Classroom teachers and paraprofessionals participated in extensive training in our CKLA, our Core Knowledge Language Arts, in preparation for our new literacy curriculum that is being implemented this school year. Our special education teachers met with Sherri Trina and Kristin Nissoudi for an overview of the new special education requirements for the school year. And additionally, our paraprofessionals that assist in our past sub-separate classrooms also received what we call ACE Training, which is a software that we use for ABA therapy, Applied Behavioral Analysis. Faculty was also able to enjoy a lunch from T's Catering in Wes Boylston, and we just want to say thank you to Jack and Leonardo and all of the PTA members that donated or dedicated their time to volunteer. Just important dates for this month, we have our picture day on September 16th, which is Tuesday. There was a typo in your report, our open houses are going to be held on Wednesday, September 17th, which will be for third, fourth, and fifth grade families from six to seven o'clock. And on Thursday next week, on September 18th, we will have our open house for first and second grade families. Also, on Wednesday, the 17th, we have our first PTA meeting of the year, which will be at seven o'clock in the Major Edwards Library. And on Friday, September 26th, we will have our first community meeting for all of our students in K through fifth grade, and our focus will be on resilience. That's all I have for you today. If you have any questions, let me know.
Excellent, thanks, Alex. Anybody have any questions for Alex? All right. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, testing, testing. All right, good to go. All right, thank you very much. The opening at the Middle High School has gone very smoothly. Mrs. Smith, my assistant principal, and I are very pleased with the new staff that we've hired here at the Middle High School. We're entering our third year in the new high school schedule, and we continue to see the positive impact on student motivation, academic achievement, and the overall tone of the building. Once again, our senior class, the class of 2026, did a great job of welcoming all the students and staff on the opening day. Our school pictures and assemblies went very well. Our staff received their new ID badges today, and students received their student IDs as well. We'll do a picture retake on the 17th for students that weren't pleased with their school picture. We had assemblies with all the students during which we reset our expectations for a productive, cooperative, and respectful school culture, and we're truly excited at the way that our school year has begun. Highlights of our class meetings included setting the tone for building leadership with our seniors, being an example to the other students in the school. We warmly welcomed our freshman class for their first year of high school. We spoke with the eighth-grade students about their final year of middle school and planning for this year's Washington, DC trip. We greeted the new sixth graders with enthusiasm at the start of their middle school careers, and of course, welcomed back our seventh graders who are now middle school veterans. We reviewed with all of the classes the expectations and procedures for leaving the classroom, having a pass, respectful and responsible use of cell phones, procedures for staying after school, for using late bus, accessing homework club, et cetera. We urged our sophomores and juniors to work hard, study hard, get involved in activities to build their high school transcripts as they prepare for the college application process. Each grade received its own message and focus for the beginning of the new school year. The middle schools have kicked off their magazine drive. At this point, they've raised just over $4,000 in the first five days. Money earned goes towards their individual trips to Nature's Classroom and to Washington, DC. The magazine drive has allowed students to participate in contributing towards their own school trip for many years while also raising school spirit. Congratulations to the boys soccer team on their first win this afternoon. I'm awaiting word on girls soccer. Bet they didn't play today, so they win. Okay, so tomorrow, girls soccer hopes to win. I'd like to thank Mrs. Smith, our athletic director, for incredibly smooth start to this season. We have students from Tohoto and Wes Boylston coordinating football practices. We have a highly competitive cheer team. We've got kids running cross-country, playing field hockey, playing golf. It's a very exciting time of year, and we look forward to supporting all the teams. School spirit seems to be at a really high point, and we hope to celebrate the success of our student athletes throughout the fall. Thank you all for welcoming our newest members of the staff. A couple of other folks, paraprofessionals, that weren't able to make it tonight. Miguel Rodriguez, who's a WB grad from the class of 2020, is working in special education. Nadia Kaminski, who is a, has been a long-term sub, is now working in our high school as a special ed para. And newly hired Franklin Hernandez, came to us from the Shrewsbury Public Schools, is doing a wonderful job working with students in our past program. Part of my presentation tonight, the superintendent asked me to say a few words about our new memorandum of understanding, the agreement with Quinn-Sigamon Community College for high school students who wish to pursue dual enrollment. Speaking on this issue, I've invited our guidance team of Mrs. Carlson and Mrs. LaRoche to give you a brief overview of this new agreement, which is very exciting, as it puts our high school students on the doorstep of college, beginning in their junior and senior year. Becky and Marissa, thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Absolutely. So we kind of wanted to recap, we talked to you last year at the end of, in the spring, about QCC and the dual enrollment program. We actually were able to trial that this summer. We had eight students that was participating in the dual enrollment program. This was fully online for those students. They met weekly with an advisor just to check in with them and to make sure that everything was going smoothly. So what is it? This is an opportunity for juniors and seniors to take a college course in high school, and they'll be able to receive credits through our high school, along with credits for college. So the courses would be taught by a QCC professor here at Wes Boylston, and the courses that we would be teaching would be Intro to Sociology, Public Speaking, Criminal Justice, Health Science, and Government. So I'm sorry we didn't have the presentation available to you earlier, but we wanted to make sure you had some copies in front of you. Marissa mentioned some of the classes that would be offered, and I was trying to not have the papers stick to each other, so I'm not sure if she mentioned, all the classes that would be offered to our students for dual enrollment would be part of the Mass State Transfer Program, which means it's guaranteed transfer credits to the Massachusetts State Schools for our students, which is great news. While we can't guarantee these classes will transfer to other schools or other states' out-of-state schools, there is a likelihood of it, because they are some of those general ed classes that all college students have to take, you know, in their first couple of years, so that's pretty exciting. Just to kind of recap some of the benefits for our students having this opportunity, the biggest one is that students are earning transferable credit. So they're entering college already with credits under their belt, which can push them ahead a little bit to start some classes directly related to their major or area of interest earlier. So it's pretty exciting for them, especially those motivated students that are really, you know, ready to get into education or criminal justice or whatever it is that they're interested in. It also might bring down the cost of them once they get to college, because they do already have some of those credits done before they enter, so that's less credits that they would technically have to buy when they're at college. It does help students just to start exploring earlier, get a taste of college, be a little bit more prepared for college-level coursework and classes, because they've had that opportunity to try it out in high school with some safeguards in place, right? We're still here supporting our students, coaching them along, providing guidance. In addition, students would have access to all of the support services at QCC, so they can use their tutoring center, they can go to their library, they could even go to their gym. So that's a really cool connection through the dual enrollment program. It's accessible. We're looking to have these offered here in our building, so even for students who don't have their license yet, they would still be able to access these classes, or wouldn't be able to get to the campus, they're still able to do so because they're being offered here in our building. So we were really excited, and we really want to thank Emily for planning the C with us last year and really getting us connected with QCC. We actually have a meeting in the works, I think, for early October with the folks there, Chris, Marissa, and myself, to get the ball rolling, to hopefully be offering this to our juniors and seniors for spring, to actually have some of those classes they can take. When we spoke about this last year, there was a cost associated with these courses. While they might have still helped students save money for college, it still might have not been accessible for all of the students in our community to be able to purchase these classes. So we were really excited over the summer to get an email from Dr. Riley that this MOU had been signed and that there was grant money available, so that there will be no cost to our students to take these classes. So we're really happy about that, excited to get the ball rolling. We appreciate everyone's efforts in this, and we'll certainly keep you up to date.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you, Marissa. It's a very exciting opportunity, and you guys have done a great job of introducing it to the community, and look forward to introducing it to the students very soon. Thank you both.
Thank you both. Thank you for your leadership on this, and congratulations. This is a wonderful step in the right direction. Congratulations.
Thank you. Very excited.
So you're going to start this spring, so once it's rolling, I guess juniors and seniors will be able to get, you know, starting the junior year, up to four? If they do two junior year, two senior year?
Yep.
Excellent.
So one course will be offered in the fall, and then another course would be offered in the spring. Yep.
Excellent, so that would be four courses, plus if they have AP credits or anything else that could exempt them. Excellent. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and I would just like to say thank you. Excellent news on the grant, so that's great. If that's it, Chris, we'll move on. All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Chris before we move on? Does anybody else have any questions for Chris before we move on? No. Tracy, how's that?
Sherry?
Yes, hello, good evening. Like education and special education, I like to say we embrace the unexpected, unexpected every year. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank not only the special education staff, but all the staff and building administration, support staff for a very smooth start of the school year. We always have a few bumps in the roads or obstacles, but we get through it, and we have gotten through it with a few unexpected situations. But I just want to thank the staff because we really did a lot of restructuring and movement for this school year to better service our students. And I am utterly impressed with the professionalism of the staff coming in and embracing their new roles and positions and their dedication and just their overall professionalism and their willingness to learn and move forward with this. And I can say that I am thoroughly satisfied with the changes we made and how well they're going and the partnerships that we have and consultations that are going on right now. It has been wonderful to see. So I just wanted to thank all the staff, especially the special education staff, but also all the teachers because it is a partnership for our students.
Thank you, Sherry. Anybody have any questions for Sherry?
No, I just want to, you thank your staff, I want to thank you because I know that a lot of the cuts that came, came to your department and your approach and the thought and care that you've taken to make some of those moves and be thoughtful about how to mitigate the impact on the schools has been tremendous, and thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, we can move on to Christie.
First of all, I'd like to also thank the custodial staff and the maintenance staff for all the preparation and open the buildings and getting the schools ready for the students to start, and for the teachers and the movement and evolve of classrooms and things being put together. And the central office staff too, with all of the administrative team working together for a smooth opening of the school year, and the staff in central office with getting the ordering and everything together for everyone that needed everything to open the school. But in your packet is your expense report. I don't know if anyone has any questions. We're still in work in progress with people entering things for incumbrances and stuff where it's the beginning of the school year.
Excellent, I mean, I know it's early, but is there any things that have popped up that are kind of unexpected or out of the ordinary when it comes to the budget or expenditures or anything?
No.
Anybody have any questions for Christie? All right, if not, we'll move on to superintendent report.
Thank you. My first official superintendent report, so thank you. And the school year has, for me, gotten off to a wonderful start, and I appreciate the administrative staff who welcomed me over the summer, the teachers when they came back, with the students. It's been incredible, and I am so thankful to be here and to put the work in for all of you in the community as your new superintendent, so thank you. I have two updates for you. The first one, and it speaks to what some of our parents that are here tonight that spoke about with enrollment. So first off, so you should know, I'm a, I'm a present leader by nature. I've been down in Major Edwards almost every single day. And one of the joys I have of escaping the work that's waiting for me in the office is to go down and be with the elementary teachers and the elementary students. And I think they got me sick last week, I'm pretty sure, holding the preschooler sign. That was the wrong, but it was worth it. It was definitely worth it. What I want to just acknowledge with the enrollment piece before I talk a little bit about it is the work of Alex and Michelle and their staff at Major Edwards. When I visit those classrooms, which is, which is frequent, the happiness, the kindness, it's, it's just, it's overwhelming. Your kids are in such great hands, and it shows. And knowing that as educators and as those who are supporting the education of our students, none of us, none of us should be okay with class sizes that look the way they look in certain grades. For me, as a, as an education leader, you know, grades one, grade three, grade four, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, you know, those are, those are large class sizes on average, and then individually, when you break it out, you look at the way some of the placements have had to be made. So it's not, it's not okay with any of us. And I think as, as I've worked with Alex and also talked to Chris and looking at solutions as we continue to move forward, because we do want to find solutions, knowing that spacing, tied back to the new school building project, right? Spacing is, is a huge barrier for us. Again, I was at Major Edwards today, and every single classroom's being used, every single classroom. I walk through with Chris almost every single day, and every single classroom's being used. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue to work on solutions, but spacing is a, is a, is an obstacle for us, the finance of it. And I respect and rely on Christie and her expertise because she can really, she's done wonders by the school district with, with what's been asked of her and her role to maintain our education programs on a really tight budget. And so the financing part of it is another thing that we're trying to figure out. So I want you to know that you do have the full commitment of this administration to work on solutions and to know that it's not, it doesn't sit well with any of us. None of us are okay with it. My first priority along the way as we look for solutions is to protect what I've been seeing every single day in those classrooms. The relationship that the teachers share with those children is special, and that needs to be protected while we try to find solutions to what's going on with numbers. So you have my commitment on that as well. That's, that's pretty much my, my report on enrollment, and I don't know if there's any questions from the committee for me on that topic, but...
If you want to finish the rest of your report, and then we can...
Sure, absolutely. All of this is tied together, and I've learned a lot, and I have so much more to learn as the new superintendent, and I don't take that lightly. As I'm getting into my, my entry planning and going through what's now kind of like the fall phase of my entry plan, we've put a number of opportunities in place where I'm just looking forward to learning more from our parents and our families, from our teachers. And we're also working on a forum for students here at the secondary level right now. And this is all just, this is all good for me to hear, to know, to process. In, in collaboration with the school committee, when we pull all of this together, including a lot of our district's data, and, and we look at those entry findings and just kind of lay out what story they're telling about our district, that's going to help me as your new superintendent kind of put together what our strategy for improvement's going to be for the years to come. And so I encourage our families to come to one of the upcoming PTA meetings that are going to be happening at each of the schools. The PTA has been kind enough to let me hijack their meeting, and they'll obviously open it up, but they're letting me come in and speak with families. And so we have an opportunity for families on Tuesday, September 16th, and this has been sent out to families as well via, via email. And so that event will be here at the high school, and it's actually here in the media center. It's not in the cafeterias, it says it's a change in location. And then also on Wednesday, October 15th, at 7:00 PM at Major Edwards, the, the PTA at Major Edwards has invited me in to meet and listen to families as well. I'm meeting with the staff as well too on Monday, September 15th. I'll be with the Major Edwards staff in the library. And on Monday, September 29th, I'll be with the middle of high school staff here in the auditorium after school. I've had the pleasure already of having one meet and greet and listening session at our, at our senior center. And I think, again, this goes back to the thoughtfulness of our school building committee when, when I went into that discussion, and, and those folks were kind enough to show up and talk to me. And we had a lot of great, hey, welcome to West Boylston, and then there was like four seconds of awkward silence, and I said, so who wants to talk about the new school? And they all were there for that purpose, right? And, but we had a really thoughtful conversation about the needs of our kids and, and why that's also important to them. And many of our seniors in the community also have some relationship with the schools in some way, shape, or form. So they're, they're not, they're not missing the whole conversation either. Some of them have grandchildren in the system, some of them have volunteered in our schools. So it was, it was a wonderful conversation, and I'm having a second one of those on Thursday, October 16th, at our senior center. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Dan?
So I just want to say thank you so much. It's really nice to hear you acknowledge all of our concerns and address them. I think, you know, that is part of the frustration that, you know, we hear from the community and parents, is that, you know, this problem of overcrowding in the classrooms is not, it's not new, but it's never really been like discussed and addressed. So I do appreciate that, thank you very much. And I know it's not, you know, standard to be talking solutions at this point, but I feel like already a few weeks into the school year, we're starting off behind the eight ball, where we all know that, you know, the building is, has many restrictions and that there's not a lot of viable space. So I'm just wondering if there are any, you know, solid plans to address, you know, the situation, being that it is of urgent concern with impacting so many grades? Like, what are, you know, the action steps or, you know, possible solutions that, that we're looking at?
I appreciate the question, and I think number one is identifying what are the current barriers to, to making a solution happen right away? And I appreciate, again, the support of the administrative team because we, we've spent time looking at what options we have with the spacing limitations we have across both schools. Christie has spent time with me working on the finance side of this. We're, we're working to try and come up with an immediate solution despite those barriers. But I do not have a concrete plan for you.
Well, and I want to say, you know, I do appreciate all the work of administration at Major Edwards. You guys have been fantastic. I have, you know, met several of the teachers there. They do a fantastic job, and, you know, they are out in the community, they are coaching our kids, they do have a fantastic relationship. It's never been about the personnel, it's more just about the sheer number and the opportunities that we're providing our kids. And to see class size numbers and knowing what that looks like in reality is really hard to digest. And knowing that we've seen these numbers increase and increase and increase, and knowing what that means for our kids at a critical time in their lives, at a critical time in their education, is really hard. So I don't know what the solution is, but I think we all need to work together to think of some ways to maybe break off some of these classes to provide that small group instruction, whether that be utilizing the media center or any other available spaces to help the teachers, you know, provide that small group instruction so that the, you know, the kids that don't need as much aren't getting overlooked and feel like they get no attention all day.
And I will say in the visits to the schools again, that with the staffing model in place, it's not, it's not typically, and it isn't one teacher with 28 students. Alex, I haven't seen that when I've been visiting. Correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken, but I usually see at least two adults in the classroom, and they are utilizing strategies like you just spoke about, Tracy. They are really truly doing a wonderful job by the students despite, despite the issue with the numbers.
Yeah, I don't know how specific you want me to be, but in some of those larger class sizes, you're looking at 28 kids, and we'll talk about that class in particular. It's actually 26, and then there are a couple sub-separates students that do get pushed into the classroom. So I know it looks like it's 28, 26 is still high, I get that. But I just want to point that out, that some of that is the specialized students that we've added over the summer and impacting the different grade levels. They do come with support, there are multiple teachers. We are still doing a co-teaching model, so in a lot of, in at least one classroom in each grade level, there's two teachers that are teaching, the special ed teacher and the general education teacher. There are, there are supports in the classroom. We have very experienced and incredible teachers that do a great job. Just wanted to point that out as well.
I think it just needs to be, you know, a focus of this year and of upcoming years that we're not so reactive in our decisions. We really need to be thinking proactively, what can we do to prevent this from happening again? And what can we do, you know, to change the structure of the class sizes? I know a lot of that comes to more money, but that is getting the parents behind us and communicating this and communicating this need, which I do, you know, thank you for, because I think your communication since starting has been fantastic. And I know a lot of the parents and the members of the community are here to stand behind us, but we just need to find, you know, some short-term solutions in the meantime for these kids. Because at the end of the day, that's why I'm here, to stand up for these kids. And I don't think any of us should forget that, because while we're trying to build a new building, our school is full right now.
How's that? All right, any other questions on Dan's report? If not, we'll move on to our goals. We have our draft goals. I'm hoping everybody has had the opportunity to review them. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve these goals for the 2025-2026 school committee, uh, school year. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee goals for the 25-26 school year.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the goals? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a, to appoint a stipend, to appoint stipend subcommittee members. We discussed this briefly at the retreat, however, we didn't formally appoint anybody. The contract is set to have three people from the MTA side, right? And three people representative from school committee slash administration, I believe. So what I would like to recommend is that the two people from the negotiation subcommittee along with superintendent are the three people from, that would be on the stipend subcommittee. If anybody has any other ideas or if they're good with that, I'll take a motion or...
So just for the benefit of the public, that would be Dr. Riley, myself, and Jim.
Right. And additionally, for the benefit of the public, the only three people that could do it from the school committee are myself, Emily, and Nancy.
Because we're not members of the union.
I will entertain a motion unless somebody has a...
I'll make a motion to nominate Jim, Emily, and Dan as the members of the committee for negotiations for...
It's a stipend subcommittee.
The stipend subcommittee.
Yep. Thank you. Can I get a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, next, we can move on to the student enrollment discussion so we can go a little bit more in-depth with what we got from Dan's report. I will, you'll do, anybody would like to start?
Oh, again, I, I agree with what Public Comment had to say. You know, my, my kids are older, but these class sizes are not acceptable. In defense of our administration, I think you guys have done an admirable job. When we knew that these positions that needed to be reallocated and laid off were coming, your hands were tied. And I will throw that back onto the town. As a matter of our budget, we are controlled by the town. You know, you can't get blood from a rock, so to speak, for, for lack of a better term. I had spent some time looking back in March at our projected enrollment. And for what it's worth, I mean, you know, we cannot control late registrations. We can't control anything along those lines. Obviously, we have mandates from the state in regards to a variety of needs, special ed and et cetera, that we have to handle. In regards to our enrollment that was projected back in March and, and how the superintendent at that time would allocate potential school choice positions, only fifth grade of this year would accept any school choice enrollment. So, you know, these are kids from this community. And first grade was projected to have 75 students, three 25 student classes. And so we have five more. Kindergarten, seven less are enrolled right now than projected. Second grade, two lesser projec-, uh, two, two less are enrolled as projected. Third grade, there's a bump of five additional students. And then somehow, some way, fourth grade is right on then, 79, right on there and, and one extra in fifth grade. I mean, ideally, again, with more money, we would have an additional, one, one additional first grade class, right? Class size of 20 each. We've done, we've had that in the past where we've had four positions. And Jim, you might remember what year that was or what grade level, but I want to say it was a fourth grade.
We used to have two, um, four sections in fourth and fifth and we had around 80 students.
Yes.
And we had basically a teacher for each subject. They rotated the classes up there as well. This big bump where I think, I can't remember. I think they're in fourth grade now.
It's our current, current point.
Students held back during COVID or didn't, didn't enroll the year they could have and waited a year, which created a little bit of a bump. But besides that, seems to have grown behind that, those classes anyway.
It is...
So, sorry, just one of them. So during that time, we had a basically a rolling four section class that was moving with grade.
Right. And I wonder if that is something that we can look at again, obviously, moving forward. We've had our ebbs and flows when it comes to enrollment in this district as long as I've been here. We've seen that. And I know the term bubble that was brought up and seemingly that is what we, what we're looking at in the, in the first grade. So we have to, you know, seriously look at options. And I know both, in, in short-term options, short-term, you know? And I almost want to say that the school building project, it's apples and oranges in my mind. You know, that's going to move forward no matter what and, and a new building isn't going to bring in new teachers. Right? We could build a building the size of Gillette Stadium. We're, we're going to need teachers. So how do we, how do we do that? How do we manage that? And I agree. I think we need the community behind us. We need to do a better job at promoting these needs and, and getting that information out there. I know parents are there as well, for sure. But it's not like we can just go to the, to the town and ask for 160,000 more dollars because, you know, our budget is contingent upon the town budget. And you're going to look at other services in this town that will say, well, wait a second. Here's what we need as well. And that's where the, the potential override is something that, again, we have to seriously look at. And I know that was balked at in this town based off the way it was presented.
And just to add, so we, we do ask for more every year than what we get. And it is a, it becomes a negotiation. Just to, just to add that piece of it. Anything else, Jason?
No, I, but I, again, and Tracy, I, I echo it. We're here for all the right reasons. We're for all the same reasons, right? We are, we are to be champions for our students and to do whatever it takes. Right here and now, with the exception of some, you know, like you're saying fancy moving around and pullouts or whatnot, there, there, I don't have an answer. I know Dan, Dan doesn't have an answer. Collectively, this is something we really have to look at.
Just, just want to point something out. Like when we talk about that fourth grade current class, we had the fourth section when they were in second grade. And then we've had an increase in our substantially separate classrooms, which caused us to have to have an additional sub separate classroom, which is where we lost that classroom. Space is definitely the biggest issue and that's where we lost that fourth section. And then here comes a new grade coming in and we had a pretty large class size. And we don't know, next kindergarten could be really big as well. So that's, it's definitely something to be thinking about. I just want to point that out.
And I apologize if I'm overstepping, but somebody that's been in the district 29 years and have seen it all. When I first came here, we had four sections in every grade and we've gone back and forth. But what I want to say is having done this for so long, if this continues, it's not just impacting the students that don't require specially designed instructive instruction. It's impacting the special ed students because we can only hold on so long until parents are going to be like, no, I want my students somewhere else, which is going to cost the district more money. We're doing our best to support them with the services they have within these classrooms. And it's getting more and more difficult to give them, themselves, the actual support they need, which is a requirement based off the IEP and the IDA and federal law. So it, it's, it's, it's a huge domino effect and it affects everybody. So all students aren't getting what they needed. And then what happens is, is that the rights under IDA for the special ed students, you know, is going to start impacting that because we're going to have parents pushing for alternative programs or supports because we're not going to be able to continue to support them in the general classroom with sizes that long, that large. The other thing I want to say is we are getting slammed. And for whatever reason, and we cannot control that, in June to the first day of school, we got four substantially separate students that we did not plan for, which overloaded us, which then required us going saying, we need more support staff because we cannot provide that. We are obligated to provide the services on that IEP even if they came from another district until we get to know them. Those are the unexpected that we can't plan for. As a district, we have done everything, the, the staff here in our power to keep as many kids within districts. So we're not paying those astronomical fees that it costs to send these students out. And you know what that costs. You're talking about a quarter of a million dollars for one student because we can't provide what we need here. And that is going to be impacted by the class sizes. And we have brought back from out of district, every possible student that we can. We have gone from the highest since I've been here, 17, to now five. I just brought back the first day of school, the last possible student I could to save some district money. We are at the bare minimum and we're holding on. Every, every day when we have another meeting or an outside report, I'm hoping we can be able to get through that and be able to provide what we need ethically for these students. So, you know, I just want to say that, you know, not, it impacts everybody and you know what? If that keeps on going with those class sizes, it, it's going to be harder and harder for us to continue to maintain the supports for all students. Sorry if I overstepped.
I just wanted to say Sheri, and you've done a great job at bringing the kids back into district. When we reviewed that at our last meeting, that is really amazing. You know, you have saved the district a lot of money bringing those kids back in. But, you know, one of the biggest like draws for that is the inclusion opportunities. And, you know, being able to provide those students with inclusion opportunities that they're not able to get at those, you know, private placements. And you're right, we're not going to be able to continue to do that with class sizes of 28. That's very overwhelming for a lot of these kids. And so they're not going to be getting the inclusion here or there. So I just wanted to comment on that because that's another draw. If we want to keep these kids in district, we have to provide them with the learning opportunities that they deserve here.
How about it?
Well, no, I mean, first of all, I'll... Alex, Sheri, the entire team, like I always say it, Major Edwards and the PTA is held together by Scotch tape and glitter and love. And that's real. Your intentionality around how you serve our students with the resources that you currently have is amazing. And I don't, I say this as a parent, I have a first grader and a third grader. Okay? So I'm also, we're, my family is impacted by these large class sizes two times over. I have two kids with wildly different needs that go into that school every day and get the individualized attention that they need to learn and thrive. And that's because of all of you and your staff and because of the larger community, including the parents who are sitting and taking the time to be here today. So first of all, thank you. Second of all, it's not sustainable. I think that what I'm hearing is we have a long-term projected potential solution with a new school building. We have short-term immediate needs. What I'm hearing is the short-term immediate needs are being addressed by the staff in the moment for this school year. And it's not ideal, but it's okay, sort of, and we're going to make it work for this year. The next immediate marker is our next budget season. And acknowledging that this cannot continue beyond this school year and that we need to be aggressive in terms of how we look at our budgeting and the needs of the Major Edwards specifically and the school system at large and advocating here and through the larger community for the funding that's necessary in order to meet the needs of all of our students and to retain staff. Because that's the other thing that we're going to have to start talking about. So we have folks who are really committed, who are doing this work and they're doing hard work for no extra money. And we want to keep them and we're not going to keep them if they're going to burn out. So that's a huge piece. So we have to figure out the strategy to get through this year. We have to look at our budget for next year. And then we have to, and again, as a member of the school building committee, and I think we have a, just a vital charge to go about that long-term work in a way that is informed and intentional and that is going to solve current and anticipate future needs. And I know for, since this is my third year, I am very confident that I am sitting in a space where we have the right people to start making those moves and making those decisions. And so first of all, also I want to thank Dr. Riley for being responsive to this need and the call. This was added to the agenda. It was not originally on the agenda for this month's meeting. It was added to the agenda. It's been presented. We have all the information that we need. We've had the opportunity and will continue to have the opportunity to have these open discussions. And so, yeah, that's where I stand right now.
Anybody else have anything they would like to add?
I just have one more thing to add. The issue, and this is more for the public who might be watching at home, the issue's not just in first grade.
It's three grade levels.
If we look at the middle school, there are math classes of 27, of 29.
Yep.
Right? This is, this is not a university, right? But again, we're, we're, I know administration has done what they can. And perhaps, Mr. Forney, you can shed some light. As far as eighth grade math, you're, you're getting into leveled sections. And so, you know, again, meeting the needs of those students. So perhaps that's why there is a class of 29, which as a teacher, I'd have a bird over.
I, I promise not to talk again, but I also think that this is something, this is something that we need to be open and honest with as an issue. It's also a good thing. These are West Boylston kids who are coming and wanting to stay in West Boylston. And we need to accept the charge and the responsibility for like designing schools and, and learning environments where they and their families want to stay in West Boylston.
You are correct in offering the levels of math that each student requires. You try to squeeze as many kids into that higher level of math as possible. You don't want to turn anybody away. You know, if you had, you know, if you could split it in half, you would, but that would require more staffing. So we're currently offering, you know, the highest possible level of instruction. But yeah, it's obviously Mr. Walker, Mr. Coggins, Mrs. Zino are standing on their head to do it for a class of 25, 26, 27. But sustainability is, is the concern.
So just to understand, just to clarify, your recommendation, Emily, is just kind of ride it out for the rest of the year and try to address it in the spring for next school year?
Yes, although I would qualify the term ride it out. I think that there are thoughtful solutions that are in place that are working and we need to continue to support the staff and the administration to make sure that those work.
Absolutely. I think, you know, this has been on the backs of the staff for a long time. And I think, like I said, they're doing a great job. They are fantastic. But I think we need to keep our finger on the pulse with this because, I mean, this is a lot for any teacher. This is a lot for any teacher. These kids are six and seven, eight and nine. I mean, that's a lot different than a high schooler. That's a lot different than someone who's completely independent. And I don't see, I, I don't see an easy solution to this due to the spacing and the budget. So I understand that our hands are somewhat tied. But I just want to encourage everyone to think creatively and out of the box and how we can ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of these children because that is our responsibility.
And I think we're all committed to that. And if you have solutions that are outside of what's been suggested tonight, I would be very interested in hearing them.
And, and we're not done working on this. We've spent a great deal of time this week looking at what's going on, but we're not done. So I just want to make that clear too. We're still looking for creative solutions as, as you suggested.
Thank you.
Last thing I'll say is...
Don't make me talk.
We then get into a, you know, what's the old adage, rob Peter to pay Paul, right? Do we cut a posi-, do we, do we reallocate a position somewhere else, cutting programming? And now you're talking about opportunities. And again, it's, this isn't, uh, this is not ide-, it's not ideal. It's a terrible situation what we're in. And I think I have the utmost faith in Alex and Sheri and Chris and Dan and this committee and frankly, the parents of the community. Cause I know you guys will not go quietly. I, we don't want you to. We, we need that support as well, you know, in, in every chance we can, whether it's public forums moving forward. And hell, we could be talking about regionalization and guess what? We can still talk, we can bring up the fact that our first grade is busting at the seams. So again, you know, as an educator, I, I, I feel, I feel for it. And I know, and I almost want Chris and Alex to put earmuffs on. But as a teacher, I know like administration will push teachers because they know those teachers will always step up no matter what. And that's what we've seen here forever, you know, for as long as any of us have been here. And in the same sense, yes, I fear that some of our teachers will start saying, well, what the heck's going on? That's all I have to say.
Anything else, Tracy, before I ask Nancy? Go ahead.
The last thing I'm going to say is, again, I just, I think dealing with this problem, you know, three weeks into the school year, it just puts us in a really even tighter spot. If we can think more proactively, whether that be, you know, If we can think more proactively, whether that be, you know, sometimes, you know, I know we had a lot of parent volunteers last year in kindergarten and that helped our kindergarten teacher break up some of the kids. I mean, in the high school, having some kids that are, you know, um, pursuing like an education career, having them volunteer in some of the classrooms, getting them, you know, working with some of the kids. That's been effective in several other districts in other states when it comes to early literacy instruction. Having, uh, some high school and local like community college have an internship and, you know, working on, um, early literacy skills with, with younger children just to break up the kids, give them more opportunities for reading. I think all of these things can be explored. It's just, it's hard right now at this time in the year to put something like this into place. Sorry, there's a bug that just keeps flying around my face. Yes, sorry.
And apparently I'm a liar, but, um, not really. I, I, I agree, Tracy, and I also think we need to give the administration a full opportunity to respond to all the extensive things that are happening because some of those things that you just raised are actually happening in the schools. So let's get, let's use this time, this is an important and valuable discussion to continue to expand the, the knowledge base of exactly what's happening, what's working? What are the persistent challenges? And how can we make sure that we are thoughtful about addressing them in next year's budget?
Just maybe my only comment.
She'll be back, that's a fact.
So Alex, so this is our time to discuss and ask questions. So I think it might be helpful for the community if I ask you to, not for the whole school, but for grades one, three and four. Can you specifically just say what's happening in each classroom? Meaning there's one, no, no, like, like, no, it's actually not. So it's, you know, this classroom, one, two and three. So is there one teacher in that classroom? Are there two teachers? Are there a para? Is there a, does that make sense? I think that's just going to help people get a real true specific.
Nancy, are you asking for maybe a student-teacher ratio?
Sure, but also just not teacher. When you say teacher, I mean helper. Sure, unless you know, but it's fine if you don't. I'm just thinking that'll be helpful for everyone to truly understand what this means.
I can do, I can do my best. Just because we don't have the names on the, on the, um, but for instance, like the two 28, the two classes that have 28 in first grade, both have two substantially separate, um, students in those classrooms. So it's at 26 and they're, they're pushed in for exposure and for opportunities for very limited times. So in that, in those rooms, depending when those students are coming in and not, they, they have one teacher, a paraprofessional that's also in the classroom. And then when, who's an adult? Correct. And then, and then when, when those two students are being pushed in, they're coming with support, an adult. Yes.
So each first grade classroom has a paraprofessional? I'm sorry, is that what you said?
So not, not all of them. So the classroom with 24 students is co-tod. And the reason that it has less students is because if we have somebody that comes in from, out of, comes into our district on an IEP, we have to have room for that soon because it's an inclusive classroom. And then the other two classrooms are at 28. One of the classrooms has a full-time paraprofessional in it and the other has a paraprofessional that is in the classroom. But also when people are pushed into the classroom, they are also coming with adults as well or paraprofessionals as support. So that's first grade. Do you want me to go through, what was the other one, third?
Alex, Alex, if, if, if you want, we can maybe ask you to give a, a full report
Sure.
in October on all of this information, I think, so you're not.
Yeah, I mean, no, you're not, I actually rather just get it out of the way. In third grade, it's 24, 25 and 27. So like the classroom that has 25 students, there's two substantially separate, um, students that go into that classroom as well. So they're really at 23 and when they're getting pushed in, they're, they're up at 25, but they're coming with, 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 with adults. Same thing for that classroom, um, that has 27 in fourth grade. There, there's a significant amount of pullout that occurs with some of those students. So they are not in the classroom for a majority of the day without getting too specific. Does that make sense? So I know they're high, I mean, they're definitely high. I'm not, I'm not sugarcoating it. But there are adults that are coming into those classrooms and providing support. Right.
It's really difficult, I just want to say and acknowledge that it's really hard for you to one, pull that information off the top of your head and two, maintain student confidentiality.
It is.
Because we're in a small district and you're asking pretty delicate information.
The best way to put it is every student, no matter what, is assigned a classroom, whether they're spending time in there for 15 minutes a day or an hour a day. Every student is assigned a classroom. So those numbers that are on there is the total number of students that are assigned to me there, but doesn't mean that total number of students are in that classroom all day long based on their services and needs. Okay? And then, yes.
Just, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sherry, but two years ago, we were at five substantially separate, uh, sub-separate students. We are now at 14. So that was a huge increase that we weren't expecting. Doesn't help the situation, that's all I'm trying to say. All right, any other questions?
Anything else? If everybody else is good, I'll close the discussion with a couple statements. I'm not going to try to rehash anything. I will also express my support and gratitude for the administration. Sherry, Alex, Chris, Dan, everybody, Christie as well, for all the work they do. I do think that this is a bigger issue than just these three classes. There's other things that were mentioned. There's other situations where classes might be too small. I think there's a lot that needs to be looked at here. Nothing should be overlooked and the importance of all students really should be at the forefront for what we're looking at here. Some informational things, I just want to give primarily to the public for things and maybe even some school committee members who weren't here when a lot of this work started. The new school has been in the works for much longer than what you all might think. We started six or seven years ago doing our due diligence with, um, having studies done, enrollment projections, working on filing, um, with the state, the MSBA to get accepted into the program. We, it took many years before that even happened. The enrollment numbers are way off. So what we were given before is, is not accurate. And we went and looked at it, I think last year I asked because I wanted to come up with a actual enrollment of what we were given because we were coming towards the end of what that report was. That has several repercussions and primarily the budget piece of it. I know school choice has always been a, a concern for people. And there's a lot of the other boards, um, in the town, other administrative positions in the town that are involved in the budget that try to scrutinize a lot of different things. And they look at our school choice money and they think that it's just a free-for-all and we should be able to add that to our budget. It is very bad budgeting practice to have, um, Christie, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not, well, but cer, certain types of line items that are required that are out of our control should not be put in fixed, fixed costs. Right, that should be used as one-time money type of expenditures. Because our enrollment numbers are so wrong, our school choice numbers are declining, which means the available funds are declining, which means that's even more money that we need from the town. We work, there's a very long budget season. It's already started. I encourage everybody, by the time March comes along, we'll have a budget hearing, but there's going to be a lot of other conversation between now and then on the budget, preliminary numbers, things like that that have to be worked in. The town, we're at the mercy of the town to get a town appropriation and an increase. We have certain, um, required by law, whether and by contract, dollar amounts that we can't really do anything about. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Christie, so if you don't know the answer, we may be for another time. Do you know what percentage of our budget, budget is basically out of our control? Whether it be like a contractual obligation slash special ed needs or things like that? You don't have to, no, that's fine. I wouldn't expect, I wouldn't expect you to. But if we could maybe bring that up, because I think that's some important information for the public to, to know that there are certain things that we are forced to pay. Some of them are mandated by the state with no money. Those are unfunded mandates. So, and I'm not trying to make any excuse by any means. I want to be as educational as possible so that we can get the support of the community because we do need more money, period. And the only way we get the money is appropriation at town meeting and when the budget is passed. So we need the appropriate town appropriation to run the school system. And I think what I'd also like to ask, because there's definitely been concerns with transparency from the public, is as Dan is, is entering and learning, um, we try to, um, really show the public where all the money is going and why, to whatever degree we possibly can, to really get everybody involved so that we can kind of, you know, band together to get the school district the money it actually needs to operate. There's a lot of people in this town that don't have kids in the school and don't understand the importance of education and what is, in my opinion, our obligation as a society. And I've said it before, one child in a house right now that goes to the school system is a lost to the town. The cost to educate your child costs more than what you're paying in taxes, with the exception of maybe a very select few homes in the town. If you have two students, you're even that much more of a loss. And now you're going to replicate this for 13 years. It is our obligation to continue to pay back to society after our kids are no longer in the school. And just because you might not have lived here or sent your kids to school here, it doesn't matter what society you live in or what, what community you live in. It's our obligation to continue to fund education. So I appreciate everything that everybody's done here. I want people to know that obviously space is a, an issue that we're going to continue to work on and look at and figure out what we need to do. The school building is a enormous requirement in my mind for the success, for the future of this school district and having appropriate funding as well. And I think if we can get the community together, we have a better, with, with those with school-aged children, we have a better opportunity to move forward in that direction. That's it for me. Anybody else have anything? Just one last go around? No? All right. I do have some other business we need to conduct that I will address now is a few open meeting law complaints, two of them actually, in response to our, team building workshop and our school committee retreat. I'm going to try to address them. Actually, I'm going to address them, um, individually. The first one is in regards to the school committee workshop that was given. Mr. Brown filed a open meeting law complaint stating several items on our October 19th, nine o'clock, school committee workshop. It was held in an inaccessible location. The middle high school is not ADA compliant. Accessible audit described significant barriers to access, including exterior root problems and interior ramps exceeding maximum slope requirements under both 1991 and 2010 ADA standard. Correcting these required major redesigns with architects and engineers. Holding meetings here prevents equal public access, indirect violation of open meeting law requirement that meetings be accessible without the need for a special assistance. Every single one of our agendas has a section at the bottom asking for reasonable accommodations. We are required by law to provide reasonable accommodations. As long as we provide those reasonable accommodations, we are not in violation of open meeting law. Lack of remote access. Unlike past school committee meetings, this meeting was not livestream on YouTube. The committee has also had the ability to use Zoom and Google Meet and does so when it benefits them, but not those, but, but those options were not provided to the public. Remote access is not a requirement, it's an option. Again, I will reference reasonable accommodations, which was on the agenda, which is available for anybody so that we could provide them access to the content. Pattern of non-compliance. I raised the accessibility concerns directly with Superintendent Riley during the interview on April 9th, 2025. On July 24th, 2025, I filed a grievance. The July 29th meeting was moved to an accessible location in response, but the committee immediately returned to inaccessible middle high school for August 19th. I also provided availability in August 6th to discuss pending grievance, but no, but received no response. A prior open meeting law complaint dated September 22nd, 2022, raised the same issue in the same building despite the committee continues to hold meetings there. After the August 19th meeting, Superintendent Riley acknowledged in writing that both schools are non, not ADA compliant and cost estimates of 150,000 for Major Edwards and 375,000 for the middle high school and listed these as level one priorities, items in a district plan. Got a pattern of non-compliance is not a relevant issue here. We held the meeting in a location while holding reasonable accommodations. Again, not a violation. Available alternates ignored. The school committee moved its July 29th meeting to the senior center after an ADA grievance. This is the school building committee, I'm sorry. The light board, which included the current school committee chair, moved all of its meetings to the senior center beginning April 4th, 2023. After my March 21st, 2003 email, those meetings were continued there until June 10th, 2024, without a single open meeting law violation. Accessibility audits show that the senior center has only minor issues that can be corrected in the, in the house staff and the, and it has hosted over a year's worth of public meetings without complaint. By contrast, the middle high school remains a known barrier. Per school committee's own policy, AC, non-discrimination, the district is committed to maintaining environments free of discrimination, including disability. If any other protected groups listed in policy AC were excluded by a meeting, it would have been moved immediately. This is a moot point. All of the buildings in this town are listed in our self-evaluation report that was done. It is over 180 pages long. The senior center is on that, the fire, um, sorry, the police station is on that, the town hall is on that. All of these are non-compliant locations. Just because one is less non-compliant than another doesn't make it compliant. Again, I move that we had offered reasonable accommodations. And I would like to also ex, express that the majority, or actually all of the complaints have to do essentially with accessibility and accessible routes and slopes of ramps and whatnot. There are over 20, um, ADA-protected disabilities that we would have to provide accommodations for, all which would be done based on offering a reasonable accommodation if someone required. Acknowledge of ADA needs. As the town meetings, a school committee requested approximately 50,000 for auditorium seat repair and repulsed and later spent about 120,000 on ADA-related improvements to the same space. The history shows the committee has long been aware of the ADA obligations and has been willing to address them when convenient. Yet it continues to hold its own meetings in a location out of compliance. Again, this is basically hearsay. We have a long report of everything that is needed. It is millions of dollars to address and we're doing what we can. Again, I mentioned earlier, we have severe budget issues and severe money problems. We cannot just drop everything to handle all of the ADA needs of the town. It would be extremely expensive. The state understands this and has provided us with alternate to be able to conduct our business in the rooms that we are conducting our business. The request is that the school committee acknowledge the holdings on the nine o'clock meeting at the middle high school violated by open meeting law. Immediate relocation of future subcommittee, school committee and subcommittee meetings to ADA-compliant spaces such as the senior center, town hall and police station. school committee and subcommittee meetings to ADA-compliant spaces, such as the senior center, town hall, and police station. Commit to providing interactive video participation, Zoom, and Google Meets for all meetings, instead of relying on YouTube with no remote access. Provide training for school committee members and superintendent on both open meeting law and ADA compliance. As mentioned, the senior center, the town hall, and the police station are not compliant, so moving them there does not, maybe he might not file a complaint, but it doesn't mean somebody else couldn't. The reasonable accommodations are key here. We also have provided additional accommodations by providing YouTube. Zoom and Google Meet are not required. Zoom is actually only in a temporary state until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-seven, unless extended. These do not address the needs. The reasonable accommodations are what addresses the needs. The YouTube is an added accommodation, so that we can make this more available to others. But as far as providing training to the school committee members and the superintendent and open meeting law, we're all required to take training every other year, I believe. So with this nine o'clock meeting, based on all of the content listed in here, I do not find that we were in violation of open meeting law. Moving on to the ten o'clock meeting. I will try to paraphrase some of these issues, because a lot of them are the same. So this is in reference to the August nineteenth, ten o'clock school committee, again met in the middle high school. Inaccessible location, this is exactly what he had mentioned before, the same exact word, copy and paste, and again, I reference the reasonable accommodations. Improper agenda revision. This is a new item. The original posting on August thirteenth included nine items of business under item eight, school committee. Topics listed were regionalization, reorganization, committee goals, and warrant signers. The item B, ADA compliance discussion, was not present in the original posting. It was later added after I filed a request with Superintendent Riley to move the meeting to those community, the committee's own. Sorry. After I filed a request with Superintendent Riley to move the meeting, using the committee's own posted procedure. The revision shows in the URL metadata of the town's website, but the public posting was never updated with a new time and date. This fails the open meeting law requirement. Meetings must, meeting notices must list all topics that are reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance will be discussed. If a notice is revised, the revived notice must also
conspicuously?
Conspicuously record both the date and time. The original notice was posted as well as the date and time of the latest revision. I would like to say that the update was actually updated appropriately, and was posted at eight fifteen, uh, eight, eight, nine eighteen AM on eight fifteen. And also, the request was not added because of Superintendent Riley. Tracy and I had a discussion about it, and she requested it be added for discussion. Failure to, and again, other than the why or anything is not really relevant to an open meeting law request. The fact of the matter is, is the agenda was updated at the appropriate period of time. Failure to address the request. Even after ADA compliance was added, the draft minutes show the specific request was never discussed. Instead, the committee discussed the discussion of long-term capital improvement costs. That was the nature of the agenda item. What was discussed is what was intended based on the agenda item. Again, not a violation. Lack of remote access. The meeting was also not livestream on YouTube, contrary to past practice. No interactive video access was provided, despite the committee's routine of using Zoom and Google Meets when convenient for its own purposes. Again, this is not a requirement. Reasonable accommodations were available. It's, I find it interesting that he complained about the use of Zoo, of YouTube not being good enough, but then also wants it here. Zoom was never used when convenient for our own purposes, unless it was because we had to have a meeting outside of normal practice to address a very urgent matter, usually to take within ten minutes. Other than that, the only time these were used was during hybrid meetings when COVID was in effect. Again, I will refer back to, this is not a violation. There is no requirement to do any of this. We hold to reasonable accommodations. Pattern of noncompliance. I raised the issue multiple times on April ninth. This is actually, I'm sorry, the same exact paragraph I stated before about the July twenty-ninth meeting, the MLP meeting, and Superintendent Riley's cost estimates. These are, these are not relevant to a complaint. This has nothing to do with a pattern or anything like that. We held a meeting. We've been holding meetings, and we have reasonable accommodations. Acknowledgement of ADA needs. This is the same exact paragraph. Yes, we understand that there are needs, and we are focused on providing reasonable accommodations to all disabilities, or any disability that is needed, even if it is outside of ADA requirements. The request of the school committee was to acknowledge the meeting was held in violation of open meeting law, as was before. He lists all of the alternate places. He lists the participation of Zoom and Google Meet, and does not list YouTube on that one. I would say that all the alternative options have ADA accessibility issues. They're all the same issues. Mr. Brown may choose not to file, and if we chose to move and hold our meetings somewhere else, but that doesn't mean that it's any different than holding our meetings here. We have an ADA plan. The town is focused on trying to move forward with that plan as, as needed. A lot of this is outside of our control. The bidirectional video participation with Zoom and Google Meets is not required. As a matter of fact, technically speaking, people are only permitted to speak when acknowledged by the chair. Again, not an open meeting law violation. Providing these things is, does not solve the issue. Reasonable, it, it addresses some concerns. It provides additional accessibility, but we still need to provide reasonable accommodations to have a meeting at any facility in this town. Again, we do not have an open meeting law violation here. Thank you. With that, I will start with Nancy, and ask if she has anything she would like to add. And I'm not specific to open meeting law. I'm saying our normal end of, uh, meeting
I got you. Sure. So the one thing I do want to say is, let me make sure I speak into this. So that was a lot, and thanks for, you know, making everyone aware of, of what's happening. I think that the town, you know, the different buildings, some are more accessible than others. I understand what everyone is saying. I, I understand both sides of this. However, the way I see it is, it is a gesture to move the meeting to a place that's a little bit more accessible, and again, that's not going to make everybody happy, I understand that, but it's, it's a gesture. It's not right or wrong. It's, you know, responding to a clear complaint, a, a clear concern from a community member. So that's, that's my take on it, and I know people maybe don't agree with me, but it's a gesture, and it's saying, we hear you. This is important to you, and that's my comment about that. So I don't think I have anything else right now. Thanks.
Jason, would you like to add anything?
On a lighter note, just want to thank you all for a very smooth start to the school year. As we discussed before, the honeymoon period is over. We're in it. We're in it, so best of luck moving forward.
I would like to actually pursue the actual discussion about the meeting law complaints. I think there is the letter of the law, and there's the spirit of the law. And I appreciate that you just ran us through the letter of the law. And in the spirit of the law, I would like to make a motion that we move our school committee meetings and our school committee subcommittee meetings to town hall, and that includes bidirectional communication.
Second.
I'm not actually going to authorize that request at this time, because I think that there is a lot more information that needs to be provided to this committee. This is to appease one person who has had many issues with many different boards in this town, many different buildings, the school, other school meetings, the library, the municipal light plant, and he's choosing to just really cause disruption, in my opinion. We have a lot of resources here in this town, and it's not as simple as just moving to a different location. The senior center does not have the technology needed to provide the YouTube stream. We have made investments in this building to provide additional accessibility. We can't just up and say, we're going to go use town hall. That's not a decision for us to make. There are other implications in that. Using Zoom, whose account is it? Is the, is the meeting that we do the second Wednesday of the month, is that available at town hall? There are a lot of concerns and a lot of questions that I have, where we can't just make a decision on a whim without having a slew of other facts. And I would also like to say, again, this is one person's ask. No one else is asking. We have administration here. We have school resources here. Anita would have to lug all of this stuff to some other place. We're set up here. This is our place. We have more room. We can actually fit more people. The select board meeting room has an occupancy of under fifty, in the forties, I remember the exact number.
God, what would we do?
I'm just saying that moving a meeting to appease one person seems a little bit of an overreach, especially when we're following the law, and we, it would be a huge disruption to how we do business.
So let's talk about one thing, you calling it a whim. This is not a whim. This is three years in the making. We have canvassed this at nauseam in this space, in the community, and in other spaces. Two, inconvenience to people. Agreed. The last thing I want to do is to inconvenience the staff that is here. I would argue that them not having to set up these microphones and the system for these meetings would be helpful if we could use town hall where those systems are in place. Two, I'm happy to give up the laptop. Three, Anita could be at home and listening to these meetings at home and taking notes at home, potentially. I think we have the option to pursue some things that would mitigate any inconvenience to staff or anyone else involved. Three, we're not asking folks to navigate downtown Boston traffic to get from a school building to city hall. We're asking them to go three minutes down the hall, down the street. I think as a small community with a persistent need that has been voiced over and over and over again, that we have a responsibility to respond, and I actually don't think that lift is all that astronomical. And to my earlier point, we have the letter versus the spirit of the law. This has become toxic for this community, and we have a responsibility to remove it in the spaces that we have and can control, and I think we, as a body, have the option to say, we hear you, we get it, and we're going to move it, to the point that is only benefiting one person. I actually think that bidirectional communication could actually be super helpful for folks who want to engage in these, in these, in our meetings and do public comment, and, and have small children, work, have other commitments that would allow them to at least participate in the public comment portion of the meeting in addition to other people. So I very strongly disagree. You don't have to take my motion or acknowledge my motion. I will make a motion that we put this on to our agenda for the next month's meeting, so that there can be a motion and a vote.
Then what I would ask is for volunteers from this committee.
I did second the first motion. Does that?
That's, I'm not calling for a vote, because I want additional information. I want volunteers from this, from this board to do the research and legwork to the pros and cons and the costs associated with moving our meeting. So do I have volunteers for that, so that that can be brought to the discussion for?
I volunteer.
Yeah, I'll help. Sure.
Fine. Then when, next month, we'll have an agenda item to discuss the location of the meeting, and I would like all aspects of ADA to be considered.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
Love you. No. Earlier points all made. It really has been a very strong start to the school year. I think we've had some tough school committee meetings in the past couple of months, but thank everyone for this, and I appreciate that we can disagree and still continue to move forward together.
In my, how many years has it been? Thirteen completed years. I think there's only been one vote that failed. So I appreciate your comments, and thank you. Tracy, anything to add?
Nope, I'm good.
I think I am all set as well. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Sorry, my pen stopped working.